Council to order. If I can ask everyone to sit a pledge of allegiance and observe a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Mottney?
Here.
Councilmember Emig?
Here.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Corio?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Craybill?
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our COVID nineteen update by City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As all of us are aware, under the governor's administrative orders, his executive orders, rather. We see a return to the sort of normal life. You know, not quite post-COVID, but we're getting ever so close. We're seeing the community respond extremely well. I think that we're seeing cooperation for those wearing masks that choose to for the variety of reasons. And we see compliance, you know, fairly well also for those deciding not to wear a mask. The arena, the relationship with the McLean County Health Department. It will stay as a vaccination site, but it's going to move into the overflow areas. And that is to continue through September. So we as staff are trying to book events, still trying to live within the parameters of having live events and such. But we're seeing us inch ever closer to business as usual pre-COVID. So it's exciting and very much appreciate the cooperation from the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager, please. The next item on the agenda is recognitions and appointments. We do have a couple of proclamations and we have to read. And I'm going to go ahead. Quick seconds here. Excuse me, my mouse is playing with me here. Sorry. Hang in there. All right. My apologies here. So first proclamation is a proclamation honoring Juneteenth. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January one eighteen sixty-three, declaring the slaves in Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas it was not until June nineteen eighteen sixty-five, two and one-half years after the signing, when Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas, with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. And whereas June nineteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the wars June and nineteenth, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over one hundred and fifty years. And whereas we must never forget or repeat the vivid and tragic examples of African-American history, which exposed the dehumanizing impact of racial violence, and we must collectively strive to close gaps of the measurable distance between us and affirming the promise of the Declaration of Independence, that all people have the right to live, live to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the annual Juneteenth celebration in the city of Bloomington would take place June fourteen through nineteen twenty twenty-one and encompass a week of education, motivation, and celebration. And now, therefore, I, Boeckel Malambe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby issue this proclamation in celebration of Juneteenth in the city of Bloomington and encourage our community to honor June fourteen through nineteen twenty twenty-one as a period of reflection, education, and commitment to end racism, which threatens equality and freedom for all. Now, I understand, Madam Clerk, that we do have Arlene Jose live to accept a proclamation and provide a few comments. Welcome, Arlene.
Welcome, Mayor, and to the City Council. It is truly just an honor as a native Bloomantonian, whose family has been in McLean County since nineteen eighteen, to be here before you to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Bloomington Normal Black History Project and the individuals who have been planning this week of education, motivation, and celebration. We thank you. It is also just special to be able to accept this from the individual who was a council member and who initially proposed that the city of Bloomington officially recognize Juneteenth as a holiday. Mayor Malambe, you had the vision and you made it happen. And to the City Council members, I say, thank you. On behalf of all those who have walked before me in this community and beyond, this is a very special week. And we celebrate and we motivate, and most importantly, we must educate. Thank you.
Well, Arlene, thank you so very much for the kind words. But I should add that we also had eight other council members who voted to make it happen. So I think it's a, it's a great, it's a celebration for all of us, all council members. It was a team effort, but thank, thank you so much for the kind words. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, and thank you to the Town Council.
Take care. The next proclamation we have is a proclamation honoring Pride Month twenty twenty-one. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month is celebrated nationwide each year in the month of June. And whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the June nineteen sixty-nine uprising at New York City Stonewall Inn that sparked a liberation movement, which continues to inspire us to live up to our nation's promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. And whereas Pride Month is a time to recall the trials that the LGBTQ community has endured and celebrate those who have fought and continue to fight for full equality. And whereas while there are, there has been progress towards acceptance and equality, members of the LGBT community in our city and around the world see it still facing an acceptable level of discrimination and violence. And whereas the city of Bloomington recognizes this and will continue its solidarity with LGBTQ individuals in their ongoing struggle against discrimination and injustice. Now, therefore, I, Boeckel Malambe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, Illinois, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-one as Pride Month and urge all residents to respect and honor our diverse community and strive to build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Madam Clerk, it is my understanding that we do not have anybody here to accept this, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. We are going to go ahead now then and move to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody live or on the line who wanted to speak?
We do. We have one person live in our conference room, Scott Steinle.
Okay, thank you. So public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the City Council. It is also an opportunity for the City Council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. So, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and call and speak the first speaker? And only if I understand.
Mr. Steinle?
Amount of road and sidewalk work that have finally been started, why was this not done a little each year? This includes raising the storm inlets, making all the sidewalks ADA accessible. That was a law in nineteen ninety, all over thirty years ago. Certain sidewalks are ADA compliant. The vast majority are not. A resident of my ward five and that she was, the grandmother was trying to hike her junior high granddaughter over a sidewalk. I went down and I told her, I said, I would call the Public Works Director at that time. And she did, and there was a Public Works Director, Public Works truck out to put the sidewalk in the next morning. The curbs in certain places are level with the street, the potholes are everywhere. And I guess the thing that concerns me is, you know, I hit a puddle on City of Bloomington Street that over nine hundred dollars was damaged my car. And my insurance company paid it right away, but the city kept dragging their feet. City Hall has been closed to the public since the pandemic began. I can see in the beginning why the city was closed to the public, but the police, fire, rescue, snowplows, Public Works, they were available, unlike some of the city executives. When, when is City Hall going to open up? Like it was in the beginning, you know? I wish that I could buy our city manager for what he is worth and sell him for what he thinks he is worth. Isn't it interesting that at one time he was law enforcement, but decided that the city manager's job and he catered was, uh, did not, was not so demanding. I guess it, it really irritates me to think that people are expected to live within their means, but the city is not. That does not set a very good example. And, you know, the Citizens Convenience Center is only open Tuesday through Saturday. They've cut the hours way back. That happened when COVID began. Are they going to go back to the hours that it was before COVID? I expect to see progress in these areas and hopefully we will see people not leave the city of Bloomington like they are now. And if I were new to the city of Bloomington, I'd, I'd be out of the city. And you can't blame them. City services bill that keeps going up, the service keep going down. Maybe it's the pad the city manager is popping. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Scott. Madam Clerk, do we have any email comments?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any member of, members of the council would like to have removed for, for the consideration?
Mayor, I'd like to pull eight H, please.
Mayor, you're muted.
Okay, sorry. Okay, eight H, my Alderman Matthew, anybody else?
I also need to pull an item, item eight O.
Eight O, okay, eight O.
That one will not be returning to council. They've withdrawn their application.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. Okay, seeing none, is, is there a motion to approve the consent, this consent agenda with the exception of item eight H?
I will make that motion to accept as presented.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mottney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Craybill?
Yes.
And Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The consent agenda passes. There are no nays or downs. So moving on to item eight H, Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Eight H is for the purchase of new pistols for the police department. And I've been getting a lot of questions. I know, Tim, thank you for sending out some email answers in response to questions that Jeff had sent in earlier, but I, there were some additional questions that I've been getting that I thought were worth talking about before we moved on. The, the first one that I've gotten multiple times today is why are we not purchasing these weapons from a local provider? I'm not sure who wants to take a stab at that one.
Actually, if you don't mind, Alderman Matthews, interim chief Greg Scott's out of the office for the week. He'd planned on joining the meeting, but the response to some of the questions that came in to include yours, Assistant Chief Chad Wonsley, I've asked him to log in. So we're going to let him respond directly to you, and I'm going to go back to mute.
Okay. Okay. Am I muted now? Okay, sorry about that. The, the first quote that you had was in regards to why weren't they a local dealer? Is that correct?
Yes.
That, that's basically based on the best price.
Okay, how, I mean, did we ask the local dealers? I mean, I'm, I'm just curious how we determined it was best price if we didn't ask them.
Greg, are you, I think Greg is on here as well. He, he's going to be able to answer more about the questions in regard to the bidding either.
Yes, we actually went out to and got quotes from several different agencies that were in a position to provide us with the quantity of weapons that we needed. So that was where we went with three, maybe, I think maybe we got four different quotes altogether at the end. Typically, local agencies are not, the local stores are not able to supply the number we need in the short time that we need them.
Okay. And that makes sense because I have heard that there are shortages for firearms in the United States right now, which might be a first ever thing that happened. But I mean, it, it's just that these are, we needed sometime in this budget year, correct? So is there a really a rush on when we would need them?
Well, there, there really is, Councilmember Matthews, and the, and the reason for that is we have qualifications are coming up in the fall, and we have purchased ammunition and are preparing for those qualifications in the fall. But we had to purchase that early because, as you've mentioned, there's a shortage nationwide, not only of firearms, but also of ammunitions. So we've already ordered a, a portion of that ammunition, which we still have not received. And as far as we know, that hasn't been even started to be manufactured yet. So we're trying to time all of this so that we have one qualification in the fall. So no officer is allowed to carry a new weapon without having first qualified. So we're trying to get it all kind of coordinated so it all happens in the fall at one time.
Okay, well, and that actually leads me to the second question is, you know, we've been using forty caliber ammunition for, well, a long time. How many rounds do we still have and what are we going to do with that if we're switching over to nine millimeter?
I am going to transfer that question back to Assistant Chief Wamsley because he's got those answers for you.
Okay. You might be muted right now.
Sorry about that. We currently have about seventy thousand rounds of ammo. For a given training cycle per year, we'll go through roughly seventy thousand. So at the beginning of the year, what we did, that purchase that we made, I believe it was back in January, was for a hundred and ten thousand rounds of nine millimeter. That was with anticipation of us getting the guns and all that, so we didn't order any more forty so we could get through that. Any excess ammo that we would have of forty, we can trade back in or sell to other agencies.
Okay, so seventy thousand rounds, you said is a normal year, so you're expecting about five hundred rounds per officer?
Yeah, and it'll probably be a little bit more this year if, when we transition guns, because it's going to take a little more getting used to it. So I, I would say we're probably pushing the eighty thousand round count, I would imagine this year.
Okay, now I, I'm going to ask a question that I already know the answer to. But one of the questions I got was why do we need to have an individual weapon for each officer? And I just wanted to read it because I got asked it three different times today. And I know the answer to that is each weapon's got to be the sights, it's got to be dialed in based on the individual that's going to use the weapon, right? So I knew the answer to that one, but I just wanted to say it just for the public record because multiple people asked me why each shift couldn't share weapons. And I don't know how that would work with people dialing in and using weapons, so on that one.
Could I add one more thing to that?
Sure.
One thing I think is really important in regards to that is just take for instance, the incident that happened in Aurora, that if we were sharing guns, we would only have so many guns to put for a mass shooting situation. We'd have only so many officers that we could actually send to a situation like that.
Okay, interesting point. One of the other, the other question I got multiple time that came from gun peoples, they wanted to know why, you know, these, these weapons were all purchased in twenty thirteen, so eight years on there, that they were all saying they would expect a much longer lifespan for the use of a weapon. Any thoughts on that one?
I, I would say for the public, regular, general public, yes, it probably would last longer. They're not firing as many rounds through these weapons. SIG recommends, first off, the night sights on these guns last between seven and ten years. They start to replace, replace night sights, excuse me. Trying to look at my notes here. Roughly about a hundred and fifty dollars to do the maintenance that SIG requires, excuse me, is roughly a five hundred dollar option on it.
Okay, okay.
Water.
I, I think that's all the questions I had. Like I said, all of a sudden, I just started, my phone started blowing up this morning with questions on why are we doing this? And why are we not keeping these? You know, the, I think the big thing was a lot of people wanted to know that if the gun was good enough for an officer to want to keep it and purchase it and keep it for themselves, why was it not good enough for the police department to keep it in rotation? I think that's a, that's one of the big questions there. And I think you answered that, somebody answered that in, in Jeff's email earlier that getting replacement parts or maintenance on these is becoming an issue. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. Just want to remind you that we did not have time allocated to this particular item, so be mindful of the time. But we're going to go ahead of, to Councilmember Craybill.
Thank you, Mayor, and Chief Wonsley, thank you for answering all my questions. Much appreciated. And just a shout out to you, I usually listen to the PSCRB meetings and, and you're the one representing the police department. And, you know, you, you get a lot of good, good information in that, so, so thank you for that. And ju- just some follow-up questions. One of the things that, that, you know, I, I think it's good to make clear based on a recent incident is that, you know, that, that this new SIG gun basically has a different kind of handle than the Taser, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so there shouldn't be any, any chance of confusion on that?
Yeah, and the weight is much different with this gun versus what the Taser is, yes.
Gotcha, gotcha. And see. And so I guess kind of the biggest issue that I had is, it seems like the guns that we currently, well, let me go back, I, I guess, I, I think it's, it's overall good that, you know, the department have the same type of gun. I just, when I read that some of the officers could have their own guns, and so that lack of consistency, that seemed a lit, little odd, so I think that's a good thing. But I guess my big concern is with, you know, what happens to the old guns. And it seems like, I, I think some of them will be training it, traded into the dealer and eventually going out to the public. And I've read somewhere where, you know, when the, when police departments purchase new guns, handguns, that sometimes it's limited to selling the old guns to other law enforcement agencies or, 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 you know, something, yeah, I know there are companies that can, you know, decommission or destroy guns as well. So just kind of those guns eventually getting out to the public, that would be a concern of mine.
No, and I understand, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, sorry.
I, I hear where you're coming from on that. I mean, for anybody to purchase one of these guns, they're still going to have to go through the, the same background check just like anybody else in the general public to purchase one of these guns.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Sounds very good. It looks like we don't have any other questions. Can I then get a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve as accepted, presented.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second, it looks like by Councilmember Becker. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mottney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
No.
Councilmember Ward? Councilmember Ward?
Said no.
Thank you. Councilmember Craybill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, the item passes. There are seven a's, seven i's, sorry, yes, and two nays to announce. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the nays?
Councilmember Corio and Councilmember Ward.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we're moving on to the regular agenda. And we do have item nine A on the agenda. And we do have item nine A on the agenda, City Manager Gleason.
Mayor and Council, the next two items are actually council initiatives being brought forth by Alderwoman Ward. And staff have no preparation on either one of these. We stand and await whatever direction council might give us.
There you go, I'm having the hardest time with my mouse here, it's a little tricky, tricky. Okay, so I guess we're going to go ahead to, go to Councilmember Ward.
Sure, so on the first initiative, on both of these initiatives, I'll just start out by saying I will not take ten minutes for either one of them. I've, as you'll recall, we discussed these very briefly in the Committee of the Whole Meeting last time around. And I gave some motivation for the, the two initiatives. The first one, of course, is calling on city staff to draw up a draft for the ADA Accessibility Transition Plan. We've had one in draft status since twenty fifteen, you'll recall, and nothing has happened with it since then. And so it's my understanding that city staff are already working on this and soliciting stakeholder input on it. But really, this initiative calls us to account, holds us, holds our feet to the fire, if you will, by setting a deadline for that, that plan to, to be, you know, brought to the council for, for acting on. It seems like a reasonable plan. I've, I've had conversation with the city manager about, you know, what would be a realistic deadline? And the end of the year seems to be a very realistic deadline, given the fact that it's already being worked on. I would only offer just a few other items by way of some direction and then would welcome questions or comments from others. I think it will be really important to have public input ahead of the draft being brought to the council. And I see that public input both happening in one-on-one kinds of conversations between city staff and members of the community, particularly the disability community, but also in the form of a public hearing. And I would like to see that kind of public input happen before it's brought to us to vote on for a draft, before the draft is drafted, if you will, and before that draft is brought to us to vote on. I also think it's really important to have a self-study done prior to the draft being put together. And I think it's really important for, for the disability community to have, have some input in that self-study. Whether that's a local disability group or an outside group, I don't have a strong opinion on that. But I do think it's important to have that voice in the, in the process of a self-study. I also think that we need to have some dates and some deadlines for implementation in, in whatever draft is brought to us. It can't just be a, an open-ended kind of thing, but I think we need to have some specific goals to shoot for. I think most of us have, have worked on other projects and other contexts. And if you don't really have, have some deadlines and some targets in front of you, things just don't get done. And I think that's probably the case with the twenty fifteen version that we've already had. And then finally, with regard to not only this initiative, but the next one, we've, you know, over the last month or so, we've gotten some, some really good news about federal monies, you know, that are potentially available to us to use. Given some of the wonderful, exciting things that are happening downtown and with, with regard to, you know, outdoor dining and so forth, I think that this is the moment for us to really stop as a city and say, let's do this right. Let's, let's do this right the first time. And so that's, that's part of the motivation and I think the sense of urgency, frankly, to, to take this issue up. And one of the reasons why I'm backing it now. So that's all I have to say about this one specifically, and certainly would turn it over to the rest of the council for their thoughts, comments, questions about motivations.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much, Councilmember Ward. It looks like Councilmember Craybill? Correct? So we have Councilmember Craybill, Crumpler, and then Bowlin.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Molly. You know, we've talked about this a few times and I'm really appreciative of what you're doing. You know, we know we have thousands of people in this community with disabilities and many of whom are veterans. And I, and I want us to look at this, you know, as not something we have to do, but that we would want to do to bring, make sure that people with disabilities can lead a full life, especially a public life. And that's what the transition plan's all about, right? It's about accessing public facilities. It's about getting around and sidewalks, curb cuts. It's about programs that the city offers, just, it's even looking at code sections and making sure that the, that code sections that may appear on its face to be neutral may have, you know, discriminatory impact on, on people with disabilities. The self-evaluation is going to be key. Like Molly said, we've got to figure out what's wrong before we get the plan. And so I kind of think we have to have a plan for the plan, right? So, you know, if we approve it tonight, you know, having staff come back and say, this is how we get to the plan. And it includes the public involvement and that also includes our nonprofits that deal with persons with disabilities because they have that direct connection. And so, you know, with what people in that community need. Let's see, I like the, yeah, we do definitely need to have deadlines. Another thing is, you know, I ran across this. Somebody called me about an issue they were having with the actually normal police department and how they were dealing with a deaf person or couple, parents that they were arresting and not being able to communicate with them because they were deaf. And so making sure that, you know, every department is, is dealing with, with that kind of, that kind of issue. So, so yeah, so I'm definitely supportive and looking forward to what we can accomplish with this. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Craybill, Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes, I want to echo what Councilmember Craybill said. I'm so, I'm glad you brought this forward, you know, as I, you don't have to walk around, you know, Bloomington, particularly downtown, for very long to see, you know, how much this initiative is needed. I read the two thousand fifteen plan and it has been sitting for a long time. You know, not particularly maybe for anybody in particular's fault, but I think what we need is a catalyst to move this forward. I'm so glad, you know, that you have stepped up. And I guess I would also like to say, having been involved in longitudinal projects, I think like this one, I would agree with you that a broad community input is vital. And the other thing I guess I would like to say is I really would like to encourage us to identify benchmarks that we could, that, you know, that they could be achieved along the way. I think it's so easy, you know, to get involved in a plan and not get to a place where you can really visualize the progress. And so I think that'll be really important and I'm very excited to support this work, so thank you.
Okay, we had Councilmember Bowlin, you, okay, okay, sounds good. And I guess my, my question would be for City Manager Gleason. Given the fact that there is a self-study involved, do you feel like you have enough to get this done, enough time, resources?
I do think so. This is something that was set in motion. And in the conversations with Alderwoman Ward, you know, I, I think what she's saying is showing the community the importance that this elected body is placing on this, even though this is something that was in the works. More recently, we turned things up with the Chief Diversity and Inclusion Officer, Michael Hurt. But if I do have any follow-up questions, and I know Deputy City Manager Tyus has taken notes as well, I'd reach out to council for any clarification that's needed, but I think I understand the direction.
Okay, awesome, thank you. It looks like we have Councilmember Baker.
One, one quick comment for Manager Gleason, just when the plan comes together, I would love to see included in the plan all the monies that we currently have, whether it be grant or budget or whatever, all listed out as part of this so that we know with the transition plan how it fits with current budget and what changes would be necessary to, you know, future budget. So as we go into the next year's planning, so if we can just make sure there's enough financial information in the plan, that would be very helpful.
Understood.
Sounds good. Councilmember Crumpler, you still have your electronic hand raised, I'm not sure if you're wanting to talk. Okay, all right, I guess not, thank you. So I guess with that, I am going to ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to move forward.
Okay, sounds good, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, okay, all right, you know, so let's go with Councilmember Ward, since this was her initiative. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward? Councilmember Craybill?
Yes.
And Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, fantastic, the item passes, there are no N's to announce. And next item on the agenda is item nine B, another initiative by Councilmember Ward to direct staff to research and develop a RUSFUND resolution. Councilmember Ward, you have the floor.
Mayor, I was going to recuse again, just in case it involves my building, thank you.
Same, sounds good, same, okay, sounds good, thank you.
Don't everybody leave, need people to vote on it.
Yes, we'll miss you for a couple of minutes.
So again, I won't use ten minutes of this time. I think the initiative, as it's stated, is pretty self-explanatory and is really aimed at increasing interest in the use of the RUSFUND grants for accessibility improvements. There, there has been little, if any, interest so far. And I think that, that what I'm hearing is that, that the reason why is because, is twofold. One, that, that people aren't aware of the funds. And secondly, because many of the improvements are so expensive, the fifty percent is really not enough of an incentive to, to allow businesses to want to move forward with this. And so for that reason, I'm actually moving along with a suggestion by the city manager some time ago that we, we actually increased the funding to seventy-five percent. And I'm hopeful that perhaps some of the federal funds, again, that, that we have in front of us might be used to help with the other twenty-five percent. And so I'm asking city staff to come up with a proposal about how that could work.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ward. Are there questions? Okay, I see Councilmember Bowlin and Councilmember Crumpler.
Well, first of all, I want to ask if the RUSFGRANT is sort of like an endowment? Or if it's just light item tax dollar account?
An endowment.
It is an endowment? Is, I'm hearing that correctly?
I, I thought I heard somebody say that it wasn't an endowment.
Alderwoman Emig say it's an endowment, that would be my understanding, but perhaps the city manager could, could clarify or confirm?
I do believe that is the case and it's administered by Historic Preservation.
Okay. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes, this is just a bit of a clarification. I tried to read through the RUSFGR materials and, and it looks to me, Councilwoman Ward, that, that the, that the money is basically targeted for like the facade or entryway to a building? Maybe, maybe I've misinterpreted that, but I wonder, you know, I'm thinking about accessibility issues. Would there be any possibility of using some of the funds for, you know, making restrooms accessible? For example, or other types of structural changes that might be useful in those contexts as well?
It was also my understanding that this is primarily for exterior and accessibility into the building. But I could be wrong on that and I certainly would be open to, to considering it for, for other purposes. But I, I would need that confirmed by someone.
Real quick, Mayor, do you care if I correct comment? It might have changed the line of question that Alderwoman Bowlin was going to take. The Economic Community Development Director, Melissa Hahn, just did send me a text. This is a general fund item and it's actually budgeted through the Planning Division of her department.
So, so that means that it's a tax seller rather than an endowment? Is that correct?
I'm going with my lifeline here real quick. I'll get, I'll get you an answer here in a second.
Okay, thank you, that's all right.
Okay, sorry, because my line got disconnected for a moment. I don't know if it was the same thing for everybody, but you know, all of a sudden everything froze. So I'm back on. So where were we? Let me see here, so I do have Councilmember Becker, did you get a chance to ask your question?
No, I just want to follow up and maybe Tim's research when he gets his answer will help. But I'm looking for kind of extending Donna's question. If it is general taxpayer budget line item, then I want to know what's, what is the budget for that? And are there limits on per instance of the use of the, the grant and so forth? I'd just like some, some more details on what the, what the constraints around the use are currently.
Actually, I just did, I've got my finance director that hopped in here. These are city dollars, this is not an endowment. And any additional or follow-up questions, definitely we'll get responses to those in the next day or two. And then could report that back as a follow-up to this Committee of the Whole.
Okay, so thank you, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Motney.
Yeah, my questions are along this same line. What's the total population in terms of the cost associated with this? And did the two thousand fifteen analysis include any estimates as to the extent of what our aspiration would be in terms of our financial commitment? And I don't know whether or not any analysis has been done. It's just my perception from some conversations that the expense associated with this could be significant, which is not a reason not to do it, but just being mindful of that. which is not a reason not to do it, but just being mindful of that, particularly since it is coming out of the general budget, that we would have to be able to find ways to pay for it. I'm going to add a Part B to this as well, and the Part B would be related to the cost sharing. I think in the agenda packet, there was just a reference to the cost sharing, of course, as it's currently stated, pointed out at 50, but if it changed to 75, but that 25% imposition upon the business or building owner and just being mindful of how we go about navigating that.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Baker. Are there any other? I don't see any other questions. So, can I have a motion? Okay, motion by Councilmember Corio?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Crumpler. Madam Plurk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew? Oh, sorry, he was refused. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, but I would like all those answers to the questions brought forward. I think it would tie into the plant too. Sorry to talk, but.
Okay, just, just a quick moment here. I look like Jeff, City Attorney Jeff.
I, I would just, for the record, just to clarify what the motion was.
Oh, sure.
And, and maybe it's as simple as to move forward with researching and bringing this back and, and drafting a resolution. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Motion.
So the motion is to direct the.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. But to direct, to direct the staff to research and develop a Rust Fund Resolution. That was the initial motion. Okay? All right. Sounds good. So, we were at Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the item passes. There are no needs to announce except for Councilmember Matthew and Councilmember Emig who were refused. So, so next item on the agenda is Item 9C, Consideration of Potential Action Regarding Ordinance 2018 on the local emergency. An ordinance declaring a local emergency due to COVID-19 virus and enacting various emergency measures. And as I understand it, there are no changes, correct?
No, Mayor, there are not any changes, but letting council know to expect that the next council meeting on June 28th, that we will bring other updates and a request to repeal the emergency ordinance. But then also, we're working on an updated MOU with County Health Department for, you know, for further use of our arena for vaccination through September.
Okay. Thank you very much, City Manager Gleason. Next item on the agenda is Item 11, which is to finance the directors' report. And I'm going to ask City Manager Gleason to introduce the item.
Actually, Mayor, it's just the city managers' discussion. And then Finance Director Scott Rathbun, who I am sure is panicking right now.
Okay. That's what I have on my list here.
Will not be until the second council meeting this month. So, but I appreciated that stress you just caused him.
Yes, just try to stress him a little bit.
Phil, if you would, please put up the first slide. And the downtown farmer's market every Saturday, May through October, 7:30 to 12:00 p.m. These have been well-attended. So much appreciation out of, you know, those patrons, you know, those that come. And then also the businesses that are represented down there. It's just a nice atmosphere to be a part of. Next slide. Get Your Fix on Route 66, July 1st, Friday, and this will be July 2nd. And it's 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Again, we, we, we see, you know, just the atmosphere getting beyond COVID. Everybody's anxious to get out. Cogs and corsets was well-attended. And this one a month from now, we expect the same. So, next slide, Phil. Animal Crackers Education Classes at Millar Park Zoo. This is a couple of days after the 4th, on July 6th, 7th, and 8th. You can go to the Bloomington Parks website for additional information on this. You know, hope for these to be well-attended as well. Next slide. And Free Community Concert Series in Franklin Park. This is one, might have been other elected officials, but I know Alderman Crumpler was at the one earlier. It's over the lunch hour. The next one is Wednesday, June 23rd, and then the following week on the 30th. Come down and enjoy some vocal music, and then also Free Community Concert Series. I'm sorry, I'm going to back this up. The one that I saw Alderman Crumpler at was the Lunch Series at Withers Park. And then the Evening Series is at Franklin Park, and the dates are right there on the screen as well, and can be found on our website. Next slide. This is something that we're very proud of, receiving quite, quite a few comments. We want people to, the residents know, but definitely want people to know when you are in the city of Bloomington. And this sign can be located at Veterans and Empire. This actually came about as an economic development discussion with Melissa Hahn and her staff for the development Texas Roadhouse and that area over by Barnes and Nobles. And the idea was something that had a clear line of vision for people that are sitting at that intersection. And it's turned into this landscaping and then this extremely, you know, I, I think an attractive visual for the community. What you see there, you've got, and there's the other slide, but in that previous picture, Jay Fetzloff, his Parks Team did this. Dave Lamb was the supervisor. I see him on the left, and that's the Parks Team that worked on this, and they've done a great job. There's more to come with some of the landscaping, but receiving quite a few comments and compliments on this. And I think that's it, isn't it, Phil? And that'll do it. Back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, City Manager Gleason. Next item on the agenda is not the Fin, the Finance Director's Report. It's the mayor's discussion. Just a few brief comments. Just a reminder that Juneteenth events started tonight. While they are virtual for this year, the plan is to be, for it to be live next year. It is unfortunate that when they were planning for this, you know, nobody knew that we would be in, in a position where we would be open. So they did their best they could, and I think, you know, what they've come up with is, you know, fantastic programming. So I'm looking forward to it. This is a really busy week for me from a personal standpoint, because I, I have a family event, you know, huge event happening. My daughter's getting married, so it's, it's, it's going to be very difficult to, 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 to attend, you know, at least for, for, I would have wanted to attend every night, but that might be a little bit difficult. But I'll do the best that I can. From what I understand, that the events are going to be recorded, so people can go back and take a look at those as well. So definitely encourage everybody to take advantage of that opportunity. I'm very excited about the fact that we are now in Phase 5, and, and we can, you know, begin to, to live our life with a semblance of normal and, and, you know, lots of events and getting together like we used to. But again, I, I remind everybody to, to remember the, the things that got us here and to continue to, to practice, you know, good habits like we had before. For those who haven't been vaccinated, if you could do that as well, that, that would be great. I also attended First Friday in downtown Bloomington, which was a fantastic event. So it's, it's just nice to just be out there amongst folks in downtown and, and just enjoying the event. So I would encourage all of you as well, whatever you have an opportunity to do, to do the same thing for the next First Friday. And next, this coming Wednesday, there is a press conference at Millar Park Zoo where the Millar Park Zoo staff will, will discuss the zoo expansion and rebranding. So I plan on being in attendance. If you have an opportunity, yes, council members and other members of the community to attend, that'd be great. From what I understand, there will be other elected officials who will also be present at the state level as well. And I think that is all I, I have. So we're going to move on to council member discussion. And I see Councilmember Matthew, Councilmember Adio, Councilmember Crumpler.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. Just a shout out for another event is Downtown Bloomington. Specifically, the 300 Block will be hosting Pride Fest this year on Saturday, the 26th. And there are performers and all kinds of stuff going on. So take a look, keep your eyes out and watch for that. Watch as the announcements keep coming out. But, you know, Jan Lancaster at the Bistro and a bunch of other people are coordinating, and it looks like it's shaping up to be a pretty amazing day to kind of cap off the end of Pride Month. So that was Saturday, June 26th. Thank you.
Councilmember Corio?
Thanks. Yeah, really excited about celebrating Pride with everybody downtown. Happy Pride, y'all. And also, happy Juneteenth. I also wanted to follow up on one council initiative that I had introduced a while back. Councilmember Crable and I had been, had worked on a version of the Welcoming Cities Ordinance, like a revamped version for 2021. And it got introduced, and what we had committed to do was to have some experts come and talk to us and do some presentations. I still think it probably makes sense for us to line up a presentation from the police around how they plan to deal with, how they have been dealing with and plan to deal with ICE interactions. And it would be great to have some experts, but I did want to let folks know that the Illinois Legislature passed the Illinois Way Forward Act, which is amazing because it makes every city a welcoming city. So there is no longer a need for every city council to decide that they are a welcoming city. This will be the case all over the state of Illinois, and it was a hard-fought victory. And so really appreciative of all of the organizers who helped to pull this off. And so this will mean that there will be restrictions in place in terms of the interactions that can happen, the questions that can be asked of people in regards to their statuses. And so that would just be, Tim and I will work to bring that back to an agenda item. The bill is waiting, awaiting the governor's signature. And so once it's official, I think we can get the ball rolling on our end to make sure that we can do a presentation or a couple of presentations to get folks up to speed on what that means for us. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Corio. Next is Councilmember Crumpler.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I have three quick announcements. I've signed up for a couple of the Juneteenth presentations this week. I'm excited to learn and invite others to sign up if you haven't already. Second thing is, now that I have a new city phone number, I'm, I'm sending out postcards this, this month to families in Ward 9 to get all my contact information out to folks, and I'm also inviting them to sign up for my monthly newsletter, because of course, no one gets enough emails, right? Finally, I'm participating in the Adopt a Park program. I've signed up to adopt a park in, in my ward, Eagleview Park. And one of the neighbors near that park has generously donated two dog waste stations to be installed. There are a lot of dogs in that neighborhood, so I know once those stations are installed, we're going to have happy pets and happy families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Crumpler. Next is Councilmember Bowlin.
Uh, yeah, I would like to have Councilmember Crumpler's newsletter sent to me, so I can keep up with what you're doing. And my comment is maybe not so... Well, I should, this is advice. What I would like you to do, everybody that's listening, is to go out and buy toilet leak sample tester kit. Because I got a bill for $355 on my water bill because one of my toilets is leaking. So I suggest that people go out and test whether or not their toilets are leaking, because I didn't hear anything. I didn't know. And in addition, I'm very happy that we have that insurance on our water bill now. I will be reaching out and hopefully get some reimbursement for that. So it's not very sexy, but want to get that information out there.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Bowlin. Next item on the agenda is our executive session. And we are going to go into executive session per Section 2 of C21 of 5 ILCS 120, which is for semi-annual review of minutes. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion to go into executive session.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, and I saw Councilmember Corio. Madam Plurk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Hi.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
And Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Council is entering executive session per Section 2 of C21 of 5 ILCS 120, which is for semi-annual review of minutes. Council will now exit this meeting and will return to open session for adjournment of after executive session. So, Council.
And, and Mayor, to report on our semi-annual.
That's right.
So, and adjournment, right?
And adjournment. Thank you.
Do we have another link that we're supposed to use?
Yes, the email just went out.
Oh, I got it.
You'll exit this meeting and enter in the other one.
Great, thank you.
And then when we get back into regular session, we'll go back to this, this link, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody here? Uh, I don't see Tim.
He's jumping in now.
Okay. Are we all here?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to return to open session?
I'll move to return to open session.
Okay, uh motion by council member Matthew and second by council member Crumpler, I believe. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council member Matthew?
Yes.
Council member Bowlin?
Yes.
Council member Mottney?
Yes.
Council member Emick?
Yes.
Council member Becker?
Yes.
Council member Carrillo?
Yes.
Council member Ward? Council member Crable?
Yes.
Council member Crumpler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh very good, so we will, um as a result of the executive uh session, we are going to bring forward a resolution on the closed minutes at a future meeting, but for tonight's report, the city council has determined that the city's closed session minutes should remain confidential. Except for the portions of the meeting minutes and verbatim rec recordings of the following closed sessions that dealt with the metro zone October twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, November twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, February thirteen, twenty seventeen, and February twentieth, twenty seventeen. So can I have a motion?
Okay, go ahead. Yep, uh no motions necessary, just, this is just for information, and I think it was actually the November fourteenth, twenty sixteen meeting, I think there you may have misstated that, it's October twenty-fourth, twenty sixteen, November fourteen, twenty sixteen, February thirteen, twenty seventeen, and February twenty, twenty seventeen.
Okay, sounds good, yeah, I should have my glasses on, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, so now, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by council member Bowlin and second by council member Carrillo. Uh, all those in favors, should should we do a roll call or just?
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Awesome, all right. We'll see you later, thank you so much, have a good evening.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.